Called a meeting to order any items from the public. Yes, sir, Mr. Combs.
Joe Baggett, there it is.
Thank you. Did I say that out loud?
Yes, you did. Larry Combs, former West Virginia delegate and current new district 94 Republican candidate. But a little distracted this morning because I got excited last night when I heard about Governor Justice call for a special session to have a retroactive reduction in her personal income tax. That's not what I specifically wanted to talk to you about today. As I thought about the upcoming changes in early voting locations, additions, and the compensation for coworkers, I reflected back in the late 70s and all during the 1980s when I worked as an advocate on behalf of state employees in Indiana and how things have changed since then. Back then, in order to get a government a job, you had to pay 2% of your gross salary to the party in power. There was two Supreme Court decisions finally on that that we were involved in that made that not legal anymore. And also, speaking about election processes, I remember I used to be a precinct captain and when we came to work on the polls, we got compensated for it, just as happens now. But when they came to give us the check, which they did on the day that you worked the polls, they gave it to us and said, okay, now countersign that and give it back to our party. So there's been a lot of changes since then and I think we've been positive. I applaud that your council for moving forward, what they're going to make our elections even more positive. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda with form modification and remove the councilperson issues. Other than that, I'd like to approve it as modified.
Second. Got a motion on the floor, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any questions on the purse order?
Mr. President, I may just point out a few things on page four. Two items from the bottom. Payment to the West Virginia State Tax Department in the amount of $8,815.86. That is our mandatory quarterly payment for the statewide computer system that the assessor uses and that we're required to use. Just want to point out that they continue to lag in their billing. That invoice is actually for October, November, and December of 2021. So I just want to point that out that as we get towards the end of fiscal year, and I know we're early on in the year, if they decide to get caught up, we may have to revisit that account next year. We could put $150,000 in there this year in anticipation of having some extra billings. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The other matter is on page five at the very top of the page. You'll see a payment in the amount of $12,813 to Carpet Gallery. This completes our renovations to Senior Services Building. It was brought to the council's attention during budget that the kitchen has never had air conditioning, so we did install some split unit, air conditioning units for the kitchen. That is now fully air conditioned. And they mentioned the need for a new flooring, not only in the kitchen, but in the offices and meeting rooms downstairs of the building. That has now been completed. That was done, started on West Virginia Day, and that's now complete.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? A new internal budget revision?
Yes, sir.
All right, change of status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management for Zachary Yonker as a firefighter/Hazmat Tech with an annual salary of $44,909 effective August 1, 2022. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zier, Community Correction Director, from Megan Riddell and Jillian Gonzalez as a therapist with an annual salary of $56,196 effective July 18, 2022. Changes in status received from Tim Zier, Director of Community Corrections, for the following effective July 1, 2022. Erin Hackett is going from a therapist 2 to a therapist 3. Her salary will go from $56,196 to $66,144. Erin Rivers is receiving a salary increase. She will go, be going from $56,196 to $60,960. Nicole Prentice is receiving a salary increase. She will be going from $47,776 to $56,196. And remove Ronald Dunmire from payroll effective July 5, 2022. Any questions on the change of status?
How many Hazmat techs do we have?
Well, we have 20, we have 22. Go ahead, Eddie. We have 22 total uniforms. That includes the chief. And this backfills the vacancy that we had.
Puts us up to strength on Hazmat tech.
Yeah, I mean, every employee hired, if they are not already a Hazmat tech, will be required to be a Hazmat tech.
All right. We have the minutes for June 23 in our packet. I was not present, so if somebody would want to pull those out and make a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes as we got it from June 23, 2022.
Second.
Motion been made in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries, and abstained. County Council calendars be here in chambers on the 14th next Thursday. And Board and Commissions, nothing the rest of this week. And we have on Monday, the 11th, 2:30 PM, LEPC, 4:00 PM, Health Department Board, 5:00 PM, Water District, 6:00 PM, Farm Land Protection. June the 12th, 2:00 PM, Central Dispatch, 911 Advisory Board. Wednesday, the 13th, 9:30 AM, Development Authority, 6:00 PM, Roundhouse Authority. Thursday, the 14th, 6:30 PM, Fire Board. Any changes or corrections to those? All right. Well, bond released Berkeley Ridge of Phase 4, lots 19 through 38, 190 through 241, and 258 through 277. A BCP file number 2204-121 tied to BCP number 201-297 and number 53 through 03. Bond number SU1141153. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Any questions on that? Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We have nothing from the assessor this morning, thank you, Doug. Boarding meeting reports, Mr. Barnard.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I had a teleconference meeting at 4:00 yesterday when I was involved in getting my wife back home from a trip to Texas. She came home from a trip to Texas, and she wanted me to tell Mr. Gokenhour that we picked a bushel of green beans last night.
Oh, good for you.
And they were fine. They were just beautiful.
That's good.
And I don't know if anybody else here in the garden, but that's pretty good, bushel of green beans.
It depends on how big your patch is.
It's, the whole garden is about 50 by 50.
Nice.
Yeah. Finest green bean that I've ever had.
Get you a hunk of ham for them.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Delia.
Hey, beat that, if you can beat that.
Well, I didn't plant a garden, so I'm not gonna...
That's funny, because over the weekend I planted my, a lake. You're getting yours, I'm just starting.
You think, you think you're a little late?
I just wanted to see, man.
No, you can plant, you can still plant a green bean.
I know. I'll be, I'll be harvesting in August or September.
I got 19 acres of rye getting ready to come off.
There you go.
All right, Mr. Delia.
What you gonna do with that? You gonna brew it?
Hoping, hoping to make some whiskey out of that. If we get our license. No, I had no meetings, but I did attend an amazing event on Sunday to celebrate Berkeley County's 250th and the 4th of July. It was a, it was a, one of, one of the best, if not the best event I've ever attended in Berkeley County.
Counsel, person Waker.
I also attended that, and my hat goes off to Nick Dill, Matt Umstead, all the volunteers. They worked hard and just can't thank them enough. So, and I probably shouldn't mention any names because I, like I said, I can't mention them all because there's so many. Thank you.
Mr. Gokenhour.
Yes, sir. I also attended the event at the airport for the 250th birthday celebration slash the independence of our country. And I will thank Matt Umstead and Nick Dill because they were the leaders, and they, they were able to pull so a great group of people together for a very nice afternoon and evening event. Very well done. Thank you. On Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, had a sewer board meeting. The Jitters Town Line that they're working on the, to go from the school down to the main line, that Forest Main is nearly complete. They'll be doing their final grading this week, also getting ready to test that system. They will not be ready in time for the school system to start. It will not be completed by then. That was kind of, they were, they were trying to meet that deadline. Cemetery Road Interceptor Line that they're doing, the manholes and the pipe will be delivered this week. They're doing some pump station upgrades throughout their system. And currently, they're working on the plans for the new plant at the Woods Resort. I did not, I was not able to stay for the Stormwater Meeting because I had to go to the Planning Commission Meeting, where we had seven public hearings, which, you know, was a rather busy evening. But also, that, that meeting resorted in a new policy that was put out, and it's also been sent out to the roundtable email group about waivers. If you're going to request a waiver, then you need to meet with staff the week of the submission, or a week prior to, or a week of the submission. Because what's happening, you know, they'll, somebody will come in after the submission with a new plan and try to get it done that evening. And it makes sense, but the staff had no opportunity to look at it prior to. So we just can't have that. You know, if those are staff, you know, behind the eight ball, with no chance for them to sit down and have a discussion about the impact that it may or may not have. So this is a very simple policy that you must meet within the first week of your submission request for a waiver.
I did read that policy, and it was, it does make sense to, to have it done.
Yeah. It just, it just puts the staff in advancement.
Okay, had a meeting to report on, but like many of us, I was there in attendance with our 250th celebration. For our very first one, I, I have to say that it is wonderful, remarkable. I mean, it just, Nick and, and Matt and the whole Volunteer Board, Committee, I should say, and, and all the volunteers just done a wonderful job. And I got a lot of feedback that day about, I'd like to say it every year. And it really boosted the quality of life just at that one event. And having, I can't say enough about the job they did. Heard, I didn't hear any, personally didn't hear any complaints, but I'm sure it took a while to get out there with traffic, but that, that takes, takes a long time to get into a good restaurant, too. So, you know, it's, and so I, I'd like to say thank you, and, and really, really a nice event, and I can only see it. I, I'm projecting there was at least over 5,000 people there. No way, no, but it was, it was well ran. So, Board and Commission vacancies, any activity there?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to reappoint Mr. John Conkle to the Stormwater Board and Margie Barnos to the Development Authority.
We have a motion for two different people. And was that a second, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any other activity?
Like to reappoint Mike Lang to Criminal Justice Board. His term expires August the 31st, 2022.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I've got several more of those, Patrick Patton and Harold Slaughter.
All right.
And Catherine Brady, I'm sorry, Bradley.
Okay. A motion for three, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
And we have a new application for Cora Kowalski, Kolowski, I'm sorry, for the Criminal Justice Board for bringing up their interview.
Criminal Justice Board, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Patty, take care of that.
What, what criteria does she represent? Excuse me? She's so soft spoken.
You have to speak up.
She's victim witness coordinator in the prosecuting attorney's office.
Well, I was gonna have her to speak up or come up to the podium, one or two.
Well, you could do that.
All right, Mr. Davis bailed you out today. All right. Hey, we should, we should recognize, too, a little bit of the Board and Commission stuff was, is, Mayor Knowles got in the dunk tank, and Marie, Marie Lawrence, I was told that all we had to do is ask her, so she got asked, and by golly, she showed right up and jumped right in. So, and Dana, Dana Knowles, there was a guy out there where she, she, Kevin got out, and I was trying to get Maria in, and she jumped in the dunk tank herself and just, you know, and the kids loved it, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Y'all wanted me to get in, but all I had on was my West Virginia wet suit. Blue, green, and a dunk tank, just don't get it.
Next time, you gotta come prepared, brother. All right, next on our agenda is Will Lawrence of fiduciary supervisor state accounts for the month of July. Still 73, Will?
Yes, counsel, 73, although, and I'll point this out, 72 are final settlements proposed for actual closing. One is an interim settlement, that is for the estate of Tammy Michelle. I hope I'm pronouncing this right. Penisi, P-E-N-N-I-S-I-E-N-I-E-S-I, excuse me. That's, yeah, I know. That's gonna be on page four of your read ahead. All of the others have gone through, and no objections have been given to my office. As I say, counsel, presenting 72 final settlements, one interim settlement for a total of 73. All estates presented are identical to those found in your read ahead and published in the journal newspaper June 6, 2022, in accordance with West Virginia law. My office can also ensure that this counsel, that all relevant parties here, too, have been adequately noticed of these estate settlements or have been reported as insolvent, meaning the administrator or executor is reporting a distribution of no probate assets to heirs or beneficiaries. Lastly, the fiduciary office can report no objections written or otherwise have been received by my office, inhibiting any of these estates listed from settling today. Barring any present interested parties' objection, I ask for a waiver of the individual readings of these states, of these 73 estates, and this council's approval of the 72 final settlements and one interim settlement for this month, as offered in your read ahead.
Is that two separate motions?
I believe so. I, if, as this counsel will recall, I'm in the habit, especially with these larger numbers of settlements, of asking this counsel to waive the individual readings for both your sanity and mine.
All right, so, so with your question, you're saying we're gonna make a motion for the 72 accounts, and then the other one, is that what you're saying?
Motion to waive the reading of them would be the first one.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second, or we have a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, and then we have the 73 accounts.
That's correct.
Motion, motion been made, do we have a second? We have a second, discussion. I would like to say something. You have a prior county commissioner in here, I believe, Bobby Burkhardt. Just want to recognize him for his time served, and, and he was a very stern man. I've seen him in action before, and want to say, you know, just have the family in our minds, and, and done a good, great job. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
He's definitely a public servant.
Yes.
I encountered him as a commissioner in 1972, 72, and you cannot believe you, you go into that old courtroom in the, in the historic courthouse, and there they sit high above you, all three of them, him and John Wright and Henry Williams, and it's like, okay, what do I do now?
Right. Yep.
Thankfully, I don't have to worry about that.
No, you don't.
All right, Will, thank you. You have no state hearings to schedule?
No, I don't, counsel, but I do have two state hearings for petitioning, petitions for probating a will in solemn form.
Okay. All right. We'll see you back at 10:45.
Okay.
All right. I mean, are you expecting anybody else on these?
No, counsel, both have, both interested parties have indicated to me that they see no need to.
All right, then let's do it.
Okay.
The first one is estate of Franklin Edward Flake.
That is correct. For counsel, just a little bit of background information on the estate of Mr. Flake. This estate entails the petitioner, widow, and executrix Judith A. Flake seeking to probate her a copy of her late husband's will. While initially speaking to the will's author, fiduciary commissioner David D. Jarnett, Mrs. Flake seemingly had possession of the original will, but has since lost it. Mrs. Flake would be the sole heir to this estate even if the estate were to proceed without the will, but seeing as the code favors testacy over intestacy, Mrs. Flake seeks to probate the copy of the will as submitted.
All right.
I just learned a new word today.
Entertained a motion on the estate of Franklin Edward Flake.
So I move.
Well, wait a second, what's the motion?
To accept the will in solemn form.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, and then we have the estate of June Elizabeth Engle.
Yes, counsel, similarly, we are dealing with a petition for a will in solemn form, probating a copy of a will in lieu of the original. In this case, counsel, sadly, the decedent has no identifiable surviving heirs. Ms. Engel passed away without a surviving spouse, surviving children, parents, brothers and, brothers and or sisters. Furthermore, neither of the decedent's two, pre-deceasing siblings had children. This copy of the will was found by the caretaker of the decedent, which is a neighbor, and is one of the beneficiaries, but is not the petitioner of this probating the will in solemn form. The petitioner actually isn't a beneficiary at all. It is the son of the beneficiary, Mr. Daniel Kuntz, wishes to offer this copy of the decedent's will and to probate. The will grants several specific bequeaths, and this is charitable gifts, to the Martinsburg Salvation Army, to the Union Mission, and indeed, Mr. Kuntz, Eugene Kuntz, that is, the petitioner's father, whom aided the decedent in maintaining her lawn and house during her later years. As I say, the petitioner is not named in any form as a beneficiary unto this will. He seeks to serve as administrator to honor the, the written last wishes of a decedent whose assets would otherwise likely eschew to the estate, to the state, excuse me, otherwise. With that, I ask counsel to consider accepting the copy of June E. Engel's will.
All right. Move to accept the copy of June E. Engel's will in solemn form.
Now, the motion on the floor, and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. All right, I see Tracy Gilam's in here for Grant Administrator, fiscal year 22, Brian Jack Grant. Did I say that right?
We're seeking, we are seeking permission to up...
I'm seeking, we are seeking permission to apply for the formula grant for the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, and, uh, the formula for us is twelve thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. This will pay for fifteen vest carriers, generated low-output voltage emitters, which are, um, tasers on your hand?
They're what now?
Tasers on your hand gloves, um, and it's, uh, um, you don't require medical attention to get, uh, probed out.
These are something new that, um, if you remember Mike and some of his staff went to, um, some, some ride control training up at the old Moundsville Prison, and during the course of that training, there were a number of vendors up there, and this is, in, in the absence of tasers, you'd wear this glove and it's re, it's reusable, I mean, you actually put it back in a charging case, um, and it, it appears to be very effective.
So it's like the hand, the hand, the trick, hand shaking thing that you?
Right, right.
That wind it up, that sanctified.
Tenfold.
Quite much.
I'm thinking one of these superheroes or something, you know, I mean, with electric shocks.
Here, come with me. I'm thinking more like your wife wearing one.
That would be good.
What, what's the, would be the match?
There is no match.
Okay, all right, and this is for court marshals?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Entertaining a motion on the, uh, Brian Jag, uh, Grant for fiscal year twenty-two.
So I move.
Motion been made, second, any discussion?
Yeah, as long as they don't use it on us, we'll be.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, thank you.
A couple of things while Tracy, Tracy, can you say?
Uh, he never lets y'all get away from here.
Jeff is here, Mr. President, if we could just jump forward, I know we're well ahead of schedule, a couple of things while I have them there, is if it's your pleasure, could we do a couple?
Yep.
Items.
Sure.
Um, the first has to do with the family court MOU.
Right.
Um, you can see in your packet that we did receive the request from, uh, the West Virginia Supreme Court to renew our lease, um, on the family court. Um, the lease, uh, is effective July first of twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six, uh, after, after which time the term shall automatically renew from July first, twenty-twenty-six through June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-thirty-one. Um, the MOU as proposed will pay ten dollars per square foot for approximately eight thousand one hundred and ninety-two square feet of space occupied by the family court and supporting offices, um, providing annual lease payments in the amount of eighty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars or six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month. As you can see from the corresponding email, um, we will not receive any payments from the Supreme Court for space in the judicial center until the MOU is executed in, in their hands. Um, there are no grant escalation, there is no grant escalation clause provided by the MOU. Jeff has prepared a letter, um, to the courts, um, which I've reviewed and certainly I support. Um, Jeff, can you just explain what your, what your letter says?
Basically, I think it's all the way back in January, we had not signed this, basically the same MOU, um, except that the first term was five years instead of four years, um, because of the very low amount of rent and, uh, the fact that it locks us in basically forever, because it's, five, it was five years that automatically renewed for five years, but automatically it is every year after that, with no contemplation that there will not be any negotiation on the price this year when the term is renewed. So, um, the council, uh, we went ahead and entered into the MOU for one year so that we could get paid for all the months that we had missed so far and for the rest of this year. But the council, uh, directed me to try to negotiate with their, the attorneys, basically, from the Supreme Court and the administrative division, um, in terms of trying to see what we could do about increasing rent. Counsel had requested that we, that I ask for twenty-three dollars per square foot, and I prepared a letter that asked for that. It, uh, discusses the reasons why in terms of market rent here, the fact that expenses are higher, especially the last couple of years than they, you know, would have been on a normal circumstances, and that the amount of the rent doesn't come close to covering the amount of the expenses. I had talked to a couple of the attorneys there. It's, um, you know, I don't think there's any chance that we're gonna get that kind of increase. I do think there's room to get maybe three more dollars per square foot, something like that, um, but I mean, I'm fully willing to send that letter and go from that number if that's what the council.
Well, even, even at that rate, Jeff, it's still a great deal for them, 'cause everything's included.
It is.
Everything, furniture, the, the cleaning, the utilities.
Security, security.
I mean, I really think this is an area where we need to, um, get our lobbyists involved in getting code change, 'cause that's where we're just hamstrung, is that there's no, I mean, we have to provide space, that's basically all it says, and they have to pay us reasonably rent, but that's never been determined, and the people who would determine it would be a court, which is, this is.
Check in, check into the Mont County, I think they might have took them to court or was going to take them to court, and they did, up there.
I'll call them. That was on the regular, um, court system, that wasn't on the, uh, um, I don't think that was on the family.
Family, okay.
Oh, but there's no compensation for the other courts.
Right, it had to be family court.
It, huh?
There is no compensation for circuit or.
No. Yeah, seventy-five thousand.
This, this is, huh?
This is the fam, that is family court.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's it, and, and I'm bringing it to your attention only because we had the, as Jeff said, we had the discussion last year, we were able to do a one-year rega- I, I'm not prepared to recommend to the council that we enter into this agreement, because as he said, it pretty much is, it hamstrings us for the.
So, it's two-sided.
So we won't get paid, um, for family court. Um, eventually, when we do get an MOU in place, they'll, they'll make it retroactive back to July first, but don't anticipate if the council so chooses to let Jeff work with them, don't anticipate any, any lease payments to allow, which.
All right, so we're, the recommendation is not to enter into any MOU with the Supreme Court right now?
Not the one that's been.
Okay, and this is the one that's been prepared?
That's right.
Okay, all right, um, so, um, just, uh, go ahead and make a motion to, uh, table the, uh, MOU, uh, with the Supreme Court for family court and give Jeff the direction to, um, uh, check in and to.
Continue negotiating.
Yep.
So I move.
All motion on the floor?
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, you have this one back, it's not, Jeff, you want him to add that?
Yeah. The other matter for the council's, um, consideration while Tracy is here has to do with the community development block grant administration for the Health Department for the addition of one twenty-two way really court. Um, as the council's aware, in early twenty-twenty-two, we received notification from the governor's office that we were awarded a community development block grant in the amount of six hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and two dollars for the addition to one twenty-two way really court. At that time, the state of West Virginia assigned administration of the grant to Region Nine. Um, over the past month, we've received notice, uh, of inadvertent oversight in the bidding process that, uh, required the rejection of all four bids that were received, uh, prior to the bid opening. Um, we are now in the process of create, correcting those deficiencies so that the project can be rebid and move forward. In review, upon reviewing the need to rebid the project, there appears to be, um, some confusion and breakdown in communications between Region Nine, the county, and, um, Crabtree, the architectural firm that, um, has been assigned to assist us in this project. Um, at my request, Tracy Gilliam, who's your grants administration administrator, um, has contacted the West Virginia State Community Development Block, uh, Community Development Block Grant Project Manager to inquire about, uh, bringing the administration of this particular grant for one twenty-two way really court in-house to assure that future problems be, be avoided. Um, we're telling the architect one thing, then Region Nine's telling the architect another thing, and they certainly, at this point, they feel a little confused and, and squeezed, and, um, we, we just think that it would benefit everyone if we could bring that, the grant, uh, in-house. As you can see from Tracy's email dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, um, the state had, the, the state doesn't care who administers the grant. They said we certainly can bring it in-house and assume administration of it and it won't affect the grant.
It was a take to convert it in.
Just telling them that we're gonna bring it in-house.
The letter to Region Nine.
So, um, respectfully requesting, and this is not a, a negative reflection on Region Nine, um, it's just that, I just think that with the, with the size of the project and the complexities of the project, um, once we had the RFP and Tracy has worked on the changes that are needed to the RFP, once we have the RFP back on the street, we've never done a community development block grant, um, with a construction project like this. You know, the hoops that not only we have to jump through, but also the contractors and the subcontractors have to jump through is, is pretty extensive, um, much, 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 much more reporting, um, than, than the, the contractors and subcontractors typically would do. And I just think that the total administration of the grant, um, and the reporting would be simplified if we had it, if we had it in-house.
And the bidders understand the reporting process?
They, we will make them aware of it when it gets back out on the street.
Well, it makes total sense too, I mean, in conversations with them about, um, uh, the, the, um, the Roundhouses grant that was trying to get them to be able to do, they couldn't do it because they had too much on their plates already, so, um, if we can handle it, why not do it in-house, makes sense.
This will prevent Region Nine from coming to us, and for us to tell Crabtree, to tell the contractor to do something, it's, it, I think it just would, the flow of communications would be, would be much better, much smoother.
All right, um, entertaining a motion on the, uh, CDBG grant, uh, the administration of the grant, to bring it in-house.
Yes, sir. Make a motion, we accept the, uh, the recommendation to have the council's authorization transfer to administration, uh, of the CBDG grant from Route Nine to the, to our grants department.
Region Nine, okay, all right, motion been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
And this will be a learning process, process for our grants department, um, but you guys are confident that you got everything ready to go?
Oh, we're confident too. All right, um, keep going, Mr. Davis.
Um, Sheriff's Department longevity and seniority increases, um, as the council's aware, we, we budget in February and March of the fiscal, of the fiscal year, um, what we think our expenditures will be for, um, fiscal year that starts July first. Um, every year, we have to adjust, um, budgets, um, based on new positions, um, salary increases, um, uh, you know, some other things. Uh, the Sheriff's Department, it, it's, it's always amplified and magnified with the Sheriff's Department, because there are sixty-six uniform deputies that, that we have to keep track of. This year, um, the Sheriff's Department has submitted a list, which, which we verified, of deputies that will be entitled to, um, longevity increases based on their years of service. For example, they move from a, a Deputy One to a Deputy Two, or Deputy Two to a Deputy Three, and then once they become a Deputy Three, or whatever rank they're in, because of years of service, they move, um, instead of moving, um, up from a one rank to the next, they actually, um, move, move within that rank on years of service. Based on the seniority, and we also do that for, as you know, for our court security people, for, um, our nine-one-one, uh, operators and our, uh, career firefighters. Again, it's just, it's amplified because it's just the sheer number of, of, um, personnel that are assigned to Department Seven Hundred. As a result of the list that, um, the Sheriff's Department provided to, to us, um, I've calculated the cost of the seniority increases, uh, as well as the additional cost of our longevity increases. Um, state code requires that all of our deputies, um, receive a long, an annual longevity, uh, payment, uh, equal to sixty dollars for every year of credited service. So the good news is we don't have a lot of turnover within our Sheriff's Department, which, um, saves us training costs and things like that. The bad news is we don't have a lot of turnover within our Sheriff's Department, which increases our longevity payments. So for the current fiscal year, um, we budgeted, um, twenty-nine thousand forty dollars for longevity, where the actual cost of longevity and the longevity increases aren't made until, we don't make the longevity payments to the deputies until they actually reach that, their anniversary date, so they're spread throughout the year.
And that's an annual payment?
That's an annual payment.
Right.
So we budgeted twenty-nine thousand forty dollars, the total cost of longevity, which is a good thing, um, this year will be thirty-three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, which leaves a budgeted shortfall of four thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. So when you combine the additional cost for seniority, and again, our seniority increases are a good thing, because it's an indication that we're not having turnover, that we are retaining our employees, and that's been the goal of this council all along. Seniority increases was, is forty-five thousand seven eighty-six, longevity increases would be forty, four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for a total of fifty thousand four hundred and six dollars. When you add seven point six five percent FICA, um, it's three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars plus, plus the thirteen percent deputy retirement system contribution, the total adjustment that will, that must be made to Department Seven Hundred budgets for the current fiscal year, just to take care of seniority increases and longevity is sixty thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Um, requesting authorization from the council, acceptance of that, so that we can get that programmed into, um, into the MUNIS system, and also, uh, it will be reflected in, um, one of the state budget revisions that I bring to you later this, this month.
Okay, uh, entertaining a motion on the Sheriff's Department longevity and, and seniority increase, um, proposed by Mr. Davis.
Move to approve.
Motion been made, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second, any discussion?
So good. Sixty thousand change?
Eight hundred and thirteen.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. The fire alarm testing and maintenance, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. Um, as I indicated, uh, on Thursday, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, when we opened bids for fire alarm tests, fire alarm and sprinkler testing, um, we had had a one-year contract with Patriot Fire Alarms, which, um, we indicate, we, we notified them early that we would not be renewing. Um, they have done some maintenance, uh, on the fire alarms, but they have not actually come in, in and done the annual testing, uh, which we now have to, we're a little bit behind the eight ball. We haven't paid them for them, but they just haven't provided the service. Um, we opened the bids for fire alarm testing, uh, and read them in the public record. There were seven bids received prior to the closing date of time, and I've listed the bids, uh, in order of, of the bid. Um, the bids were reviewed by Jack Lang, Facilities Director, Tracy McCormick, procurement coordinator. The bids were reviewed by Jack Lang, Facilities Director, Tracy McCormick, procurement coordinator, and me. It was agreed that the proposal was submitted by ARC Systems as well as Cornet, Inc. ARC is out of Columbia, Cornet is out of Winchester, Virginia. I did not provide all the information required by the RFP. Therefore, we disqualified them. The next lowest responsible bid was submitted by Brewer and Company, who does have an office on Hedgesville Road in Martinsburg. They did meet all the requirements set forth by the RFP. I also spoke to the, the manager of the local office and made him aware of our expectations and the fact that we need to get them in here pretty quick to do the testing that needs to be done, and that it would be done during off-hours, particularly when the Dunn Building and Judicial Center is not occupied, and they're well aware of our expectations. Therefore, we'd like to recommend that the annual fire alarm sprinkler testing contract, which would become effective July 1st of 2022, be awarded to Brewer and Company of West Virginia that submitted the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $11,205.
How many fire alarm testing sites are there?
There's 10 buildings. Each building has, is a little, is a little unique. It takes a lot of time, only because we require, I call it, Eddie, you probably know a better name. I call it smoke testing, where they actually go up in the, in the system and, and typically, they, they started like 5:30 or 6 o'clock in the morning in this building, in the Judicial Center, and these smoke tests actually set off the fire, fire alarms. And it's a pretty, it's a pretty time-consuming process. But there's 10 buildings total for now. We will be adding 750 Baltimore Street to the list, which is not included in the bid.
Will include like the Health Department?
All, all the county unit building, yes, sir.
All right. Entertaining a motion on Mr. Davis's recommendation for a fire alarm testing and maintenance contract.
Yes, sir. Motion to accept the bid by Brewer and Company of West Virginia in the amount of $11,205.
Have a motion for it a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, and...
Then you have no prior history with this company?
We've used them in an emergency, one of our systems, but that's, that's been the extent of it.
And they, Brewer's been around for years.
They have. And they're, I've, I've been associated with them at previous employment. They do all the school system. They're, they're a very good company to deal with. Not taking anything away from the other folks, but Brewer would have been my choice if I just had a choice to make.
All right.
You want to jump to Inwood Park Engineering?
We'll do Inwood Park, and then we're going to take a break.
Okay. On Thursday, June 9th, 2022, the council accepted the recommendation that we retain civil and environmental consultants for the design of the Inwood Community Park pending costs negotiations. Since that time, I have been working with CAC, have met with them in person, have also been on the phone with them several times as they develop a proposal for this project. They absolutely wanted to understand this council's expectations for the parks, how we want to move forward. Also, during that time period, Councilperson Gokenhour and Councilperson Delia and I had a conversation with them regarding the Route Nine Frog Hollow Trail Extension. And this project came up so that Councilperson Delia and Councilperson Gokenhour were able to share their vision and expectations for the project. So they are well aware of what we want to do with that 22 acres down there. As you can see from their proposal, the estimate, their estimated cost of surveying and mapping the park, they understand that we all already have the Phase One environmental review done. They will also be developing a master plan for the park and managing the, the construction of the project. Their cost is $54,500. This would be in addition to the $57,000 fee that this council has already committed to pay them for the development of the Route Nine Frog Hollow Trail Extension, which I expect you will, you will see their proposal for that probably by the end of the month. They're working with Rural Farms, which is the convenience store off of Route Nine, as well as Department of Highways for some, some crossovers that are needed there. But they're confident that they will have that completed by the end of the month. So therefore, I'd like to recommend acceptance of the proposal submitted by Civil and Environmental Consultants in the amount of $54,500 to develop the Inwood Community Park project. They are opening a local office here. In fact, the, the engineer that will be leading this project, Marcus Spina, he's the Assistant Project Manager and will be spearheading this project. I talked to him earlier in this week. He just purchased a down house. He said it's three minutes from, it's in Inwood, three minutes from, from this project. So he would be that close and on site. So I, I actually expected to be, the proposal to be, be higher than this. I think their, their fees are, are very reasonable.
All right. Entertaining a motion to award the design for the South Berkeley Park.
She'll move.
Second.
So the motion will include Mr. Davis's recommendation. So we have a motion for a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We will take...
Good thing we're in Inwood.
Yeah.
And, you know, I hope that it really answers the questions that any Inwood residents would ask about the future of this park.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. We'll take a quick break. We'll come back.
All right, we're back in session. Ms. Balk, you ready to go?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Elaine Malt County Clerk, early voting locations.
Yes, sir.
In your reading head is also information-
I was going to say.
-a change in a polling place as well as poll workers, but that's the extent of what she's going to discuss.
Okay, all right.
Can I do the expenses for the election? Just give a total number of them.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, okay. We're looking at early voting, of course, by code. We have to have this request to the county council by July 11th, number one. Number two, we have to have the recommendation of the clerk, the president or chairman of the Democrats, and the chairman of the Republicans, plus the council or commission to approve this. At this particular point in time, I have in my possession the Democratic approval, I have my approval. Then one other thing you needed was the thing about satellite locations and distance and miles from the overall location, et cetera. So we have all of that, except Pam Brush is on her way with supposedly the Republican paperwork. We were in discussion all week over this issue. So I do have all of that material here, and I will present that to you, sir.
Right, but you're still waiting for the Republican side.
Yes, and Anthony.
Well, Anthony, I've asked Anthony, our timing was a little off for the primary.
Right.
So I asked Anthony to work with Mrs. Malt to make sure that everything was in accordance with code and was submitted in a timely manner, because we are expecting a little bit higher voter turnout for the general election.
I would presume so.
Particularly since midterm. And I know it was the desire of Mrs. Malt as well, so- And I know it was the desire of Mrs. Mauk as well, so the council to have at least three early polling places. And as she indicated, it actually has to be done. Today is the last council meeting that it can be acted upon. Go ahead.
So, yeah, just 120 days. The clerk just has to spend, doesn't he, get to make your decision? You get to make your decision 90 days before it's over. So we still have a good bit of time for that. The issue of what all is needed is somewhat in context, because, I don't know if you recall back during the primary, there was Michigan-Kennel County, where the Republican Party chaired and signed on the county commissioner, they had adopted the new early voting locations. The Secretary of State asked for opinion from the Attorney General, and the Attorney General said, well, because the code was changed in 2011, it took out that language, but it's still left in the regulations, that part wouldn't be valid. But it's still just the Attorney General's opinion. The court has done that, and legislature has not amended that regulation. So it's unlikely that if the Republican Party hasn't, who I have a chance to sign it, didn't, and wanted to contest it, we'd still probably be able to get it through. So, everything is here. There's nothing wrong with these two locations. I would just gotta formalize it within 490 days.
Okay.
Can the council take action to approve it today pending receipt of the Republican?
Did you get anything from Pam yet?
Yeah, Pam said she was thinking she was coming at 11:35 or whatever, and I had called her, and she said she was on her way, but-
Oh, I thought maybe you-
You can certainly take that action. I would arrive that, just as the Attorney General, that that provision is no longer valid. But Kennel County still violated another part of it. They didn't do it within 80 days. They went through the polling place. So, yeah, you could vote on it today.
To move forward the process.
To actually, yeah, to move forward with the process. You have to go and there's, it's not, it doesn't have to be published.
We can do, but we have to wait to-
You can't formally say that these are the locations until the publication.
We'll wait, get there before we publish.
We want the consensus of the council to move forward, to have three early voting polling places and do the necessary public notices of which will get certification, publication, so on and so forth, that we'll bring back to the council.
Yeah.
So you're not acting, actually, you're not asking for action, we're just, we're looking for direction.
Consensus of the council to move forward.
Yeah, certainly, it wouldn't make much sense if the council said, we don't want to do this. They go and publish.
Right. Okay.
So, South Berkeley Fire Station, Station 29, Huntington Fire Station, and the Dunn Building would all be early voting polling places-
Okay.
-for the general election.
Anybody have a problem with giving direction and move forward that?
None at all.
All right, all right, so move forward, okay.
Number two, we had to, we're about to do again some publications, but we had to change a couple precincts due to the increased load. Precinct 45, we ended up at the Howard Burke Park Terminal. We had two precincts in there, and we used to be able to use the big area, but now they've got us with the small area. So we're moving to the Grace Church, due to one of them, to the Grace Church, because it's so crowded, Grace Church.
Right, the old Ralph Long building.
Right, y'all, from No Back Drive. And then number two, the precinct 62, I was at the Masonic Hall in Hedgesville, just doesn't have any parking, it's not affected, and we're moving it to the Johnson Town Bible Church on Camp Frame Road.
Tended.
Tended to, we're working on that. So we'll be, if there's additional changes before we can publish, we'll come forward, but these are, this is the paperwork we have right now, which I'll pick Mr. Davis to be part of the minutes.
Where's Masonic Hall in Hedgesville?
Right next to the library.
Okay.
And I want to talk to you about, to go over the primary expenses that we incurred.
So you're just presenting this information.
So there won't be a polling precinct in the city of Hedgesville?
No, sir. Oh, it's a Hedgesville elementary. It's one of Hedgesville offices.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a Hedgesville. What has happened is that there's only like five parking spaces, and the precinct that was assigned to the sign, originally it was the town of Hedgesville, assigned to the sign hall. Well, that, most of those walked there, so it didn't need much parking. And because we had new folks to handle it, precinct 62 is from Camp, is like out there by Camp Frame Road, all of those people, and that's why we're at the Johnson Town place for the, it has to be more centralized. And there's a lot of people out there, because they got some subdivisions and stuff, and it just, it just couldn't handle it at all.
Okay.
Okay. The expenses of the primary election, we had a couple issues going with the primary election. You had all of the processes with the civics and with redistricting and all of those things. So going through the information, poll workers was 101,024.73 cents. Estimated redistricting was 32,000. That's the people folding the stuff, sorting the stuff, putting in envelopes, and putting it out. Now, going back to that, we have a whole box of envelopes here. We sent the stuff out, the post office, we verified over 50%, I'd say around 50% of the addresses, which were good. The post office decided they didn't want to deliver, so they sent them back to us. We probably have over 10,000 of these, which now we've got to shred and start over, because we're going to have to put all this stuff. So here's an additional expense that we're going to have to have with those to put out. Now, with these new precinct changes here, there's about 7,000 cards that have got to go out. So we've got some additional expenses we're looking at for the fall, but I just want to let you know, this election is a movie target, trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is. The bad issue with the state, the civics area, some of these folks have addresses like Hedgesville Road, or Berkeley Station Road, or something like that. Those are no longer regular, good, valid addresses by the postal system. The state will not allow us to change any unless we have it verified by the individual themselves. Right now, staff is trying to get a hold of these people to get a valid change of address. So it's an additional load, trying to clear up all these, these addresses to get this stuff squared away, but-
So they haven't changed their address since, central changed their addresses-
No.
-in order to convert it.
No, they did not change anything at all. So we've got all these old, let's say, probably two or 3,000 of them are like that. And so it's been a nightmare for staff, but they're busily working on that. Looking at the situation, the redistricting, as I said, 32,000, that was the people stuffing envelopes. I'm looking at November 2022 for satellite, would be about $1,890, additional money. I'm asking for the council to look at voters' increase in pay from $200 to $300, because we've lost a lot of our seniors, and we have a different clientele, and we're competing with Jefferson County for poll workers, because they keep saying, you know, I'm not, even though you have to live in Berkeley and to work the poll, you know, with the Virginia, if Jefferson County's paying 300, why aren't you? And we haven't kept up with the local area. So I'm asking that, that would be an increase there. This is an expense for miscellaneous, going from 66 to 80 precincts was about $6,800. It's all the bags and stuff, of all the things that you need to put the election on. Fortunately for us, our ads were only $4,495. Our janitorial fees, that goes with all the schools that we pay, $32.96. Castile Harris is $69,989 with all the things going on. Right now, we've paid out $26,000 for paper ballots, because the state says we've got to have 105% of your folks that are registered voters. Well, I'm trying to find out from the state, why do we have to spend all this money when, at the end of the rainbow, like right now, when they're packing stuff up, we end up with 95% of them in boxes, we got it Baltimore Street in storage. So that's an issue I'm trying to resolve. We haven't got there yet. ES and S has got to do with the computer program, it's $50,008.11. Our mailing was $60,443. The redistricting was 41 of that with postage. Maintenance on the equipment, setting everything up was $67,575 agreement, and our total expense was $364,636.92. I'm looking at the fall, an additional $41,890. Now, a lot of, some of this expense, we won't have the additional miscellaneous and a few of those things. I'm hoping the Castile Harrison things will be down. So I just wanted to show the council, because we went back through the records, and there was no record of a final tally, to show anybody what the expenses are, and here's the expense package. Everything done, just what I have done here.
If the council's aware, we did infuse Department 413's budget. Knowing that some additional expenses were going to be incurred, we did it primarily for printing and postage-
Right.
-because we knew some additional expenses were going to be incurred going from 66 to 80 precincts. So hopefully, although Mrs. Mauk indicated that there's some additional notifications that have to be made, those expenses won't be quite as high for the general election. However, I do want to point out that in next year's, in the current year's budget, it's not next year anymore, is it? In the current year fiscal budget, we base the budget for contracted services for your poll workers based on $200 a poll worker. So if the council so decides to increase it to $300, what we would do is wait until the election is behind us. We'll do a full counting of the expenses, and there may be, 413 may inquire an infusion of additional monies in the contracted services, probably not to exceed $50,000.
Right, 40 something.
Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah. And on the redistricting and anything like that, is any of that reimbursed from the Secretary of State's office, or is that all?
They gave us a whole $5,000.
Yeah, they did give us, they gave all the counties $5,000 for the troubles-
Okay.
-of the redistricting due to the census.
Okay. All right, so.
One size, one shoe fits all, right?
The, we need a motion, entertain a motion. It's on the agenda as part of Mrs. Mauk's packet, agenda items to consider increasing the pay to the poll workers from $200 to $300. And those days are, what, about 15 hour day?
Oh, it's a long day. Starts like at 5:30 in the morning and doesn't get over-
And that's a daily, that's a daily rate, is that right?
They get $50 for the class, and then the remainder, the 150 was for the day. So we probably would increase it like 75 for the class and 225 for the day. But it's a total of $300.
All right. Entertain a motion to increase the poll workers from 200 to $300. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for a conversation.
Second it, open for discussion.
So you said it's on the agenda? Is it on the agenda to-
It's in your package, yes, sir. You're okay.
Anything else?
No, as long as it's listed correctly, that's all I'm concerned about.
You're too pretty to go to jail.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't handle it.
All in favor, say aye. And opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
As you know, at the end of Mrs. Mauk's term, she has to make sure that both 402 and 413 have at least 50%-
Right.
...remaining in those budgets. So once the general election in November is behind us, we'll do a full counting of the cost of the general election, and then I'll come, I'll come in in December with the necessary state budget revision to take care of that, that shortfall for the poll workers.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mauk. All right.
Okay.
All right. Next on our agenda, going back to Mr. Davis, is a Burke County emergency ambulance authority increase request.
As the council is aware, several months, several weeks ago, the Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority, represented by Dave Urban, who is president of the board, as well as Brian Costello, appeared before the council to discuss proposed fee increase to become effective July 1st, 2022, at the direction of the council on Thursday, June 30th, which was last Thursday. We did conduct two separate public hearings to gather constituent input on the below-listed increases and the fee increases as proposed or in your packet. Proposal one was a graded increase over four years. Proposal two was a graded increase over three years, and proposal three was a flat increase to become effective July 1st, that would raise the fee from $60 to $110. As the council's aware, the vast majority of those that spoke at the public hearing were very understanding for the need of the increase, and they were in support of some type of increase. However, many of those that spoke in favor of the increases requested that the council and the ambulance authority consider some type of commercial fee for businesses, whatever that, that may be, separate from what a residential payer would be charged. And they also indicated the need for emergency services, particularly emergency ambulance service, provided in those areas in far western Berkeley County. The full council was here, you're aware of the request. So at the conclusion of both public hearings, we indicated to those that were in attendance that you would take their comments under consideration, that you would consider the proposal presented by the emergency ambulance authority, and that you would have some discussion and possible action today, which is listed in your agenda.
All right. Let's go ahead and we'll open up for discussion before we get into any motions. We had the two public hearings overwhelmingly. People supported the increase. There was a few people that said no to the increase. There were a couple modifications that were stated. So at that, let's talk about, talk about it, and then we'll, unless you want to make a motion, make a second, and we'll have a discussion, but I think we might could have discussion now.
We've got two issues.
Okay.
We got the increase in residential services plus possible fee for commercial service. Discussing the fee for commercial services, do we have to have another public hearing?
We don't have to have a public hearing.
You would have to have-
Would we have another public hearing?
I would recommend to the council that, that, and you can do whatever, you can do whatever you want to do today. You have three proposals that was, that were given to you last week. The original, the original presentation had two, they expanded it to three. You don't have to do any of those. You can do something completely different. However, I would, I would recommend to the council that if you decide to impose some type of commercial rate, that you direct the ambulance authority to give you, because there was some, there's been discussion about, do you do it, you know, per square foot, based on how the fare board does with the fare fee, which probably isn't, isn't the best.
It's not the best, best method, but it's the easiest to get a true calculation.
To extract information.
Right, it's all on assessors.
Right. Do you do it based on the number of employees? At that point, it becomes almost like the hotel motel tax. You're basing the fee on how honest the company is in reporting their employment levels, and there's really no way to verify that. And, and there's really no way to verify that. So, but we direct the ambulance authority to come back with a proposal and maybe it's not implemented this year. Maybe you do some type of implementation this year with the caveat that they come back within the next six months with a proposal for commercial fees to be implemented effective July first, twenty twenty three. There's, there's all kinds of things. You, you are, you can do whatever you want today.
In, in reference to, in reference to Jim's thought process though, on the meetings, I would think that it would be fair to businesses to allow them to come in front of the council and, and have another public meeting so that businesses have an opportunity to express their concerns and, you know, being a guy that owns warehouses, warehousing doesn't necessarily need a lot of people. And if you're going to go with square footage, you're penalizing warehousing because there's minimal employees in warehousing as opposed to the square footage, as opposed to a, as opposed to a, a factory that, that is industrial, that, you know, is creating something, you know, there's, there's a big difference in the amount of employees in the same space.
And if you do it based on employees, you could do it on a sliding scale, one to a hundred or one to fifty employees is the same as a residential, a hundred to five hundred, you could broad, what I call broadband, if a hundred to five hundred is going to be a certain number, five hundred to a thousand, a certain number, and then anything over, you know, a thousand workers on average during the course of the year, knowing that, for example, Macy's, they have that seasonal fluctuation of workers particularly just before the holidays. You base it on, and, and there's.
But you're going to talk about hotels. I mean, hotels are another issue. You've got occupancies in, in room occupancies. I mean, there's a, there's a good bit to it. There's a good bit to the hotel.
I don't think it's something that you're going to be able to, to say we want to implement a commercial rate effective July first, twenty twenty two, because I think there's too many mechanics that need to be worked out.
And I agree, I agree. But I think that we should allow the, the businesses an opportunity to come forward and.
Brian, can you come up to the podium, please? There's, there's a lot of, from employee standpoint.
Well, and if you remember when we changed the fare fees, when, I shouldn't say we, when the fire board changed the fare fees some years ago, they went through a, a number of models that they, that they looked at and considered before they actually landed on one that they adopted. And I think this process would be similar.
Well, the other thing too is you have businesses that's in Berkeley County that may be outdoor venues. Could be concerts, could be whatever.
Right, but if you have, but if you're going by occupancy, you're still going by, and, and that's what this service does, is it hands, handles people. So, the more people, the more you should pay. I mean, that, it just makes sense. It doesn't, it, you know, you're talking about.
Not protecting the buildings.
Yeah, you're talking about the fire, the fire fee, the fire fee is structured. So, you're looking at structures in that instance. In this instant, you're looking at people. How many people do you have to service and, you know?
And I would think that.
A good example is an outdoor, the outdoor event that we had.
If I was a large business and I had, I don't know, five thousand employees or even a thousand employees, and the ambulance authority said, we're going to charge you five thousand dollars a year to make sure that you have an ambulance there when, when we need it, I mean, it's just a kind of a cost to do a business. I can't believe that they would, they would hesitate.
Right.
So, I, I think there's some, some, some common ground that can be found.
It's just the structure, how you want to structure it. So, um, I mean, how long would it take, do you think? I mean, it'd be something that would have to be jumped on immediately and try to figure out how to structure that. How long you think it would take for you all to get something to come back to the council as a?
I think we could have something by the, the six month window that was spoke about. When you guys first mentioned this back in our initial piece, we put the heads together to tables and said, okay, we need to start looking at this. We did reach out to the fire board to get their numbers. They build, I think the number, record is somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen hundred. And then we had to back out because they also, we noticed that they build for the apartment complexes, you know, like capital heights, it's an eight thousand square foot building and multiple buildings. We build those as living units, okay? So, we had to back some of those out. And I think the number we arrived at somewhere around thirteen hundred and seventy six. But then we get into, okay, as, as we said, we build based on the amount of employees. If you're looking at a hotel motel, you build it based on the, the number of rooms in that unit. These are things that we begin to look at that we probably need to talk about. P and G, where we ran close to about seventy calls or something like that.
Uh, P and G was sixty one.
Sixty one calls last year. They also infused about ten to twelve thousand dollars of training into us because we train their rapid response teams. I'm sure Corox is going to want to do the same thing. You know, what, what do you do there? There's a lot of things to look at. And then, of course, all of this doesn't take into consideration what type of IT work we have to do, what has to be changed in ordinance as far as how our ordinance currently reads. But I, I think if we get through the busy season into September, I, I think we'll be in a good place to have something back to early November, November, December time.
I think it would be fair, Brian, to say that there, there'd be more than one formula.
Yeah, there, there's definitely going to be multiple formulas. You know, you don't want to hurt the small businesses with, you know, maybe the husband, wife and, and the daughter or son working a business as compared to an eight hundred person business running multiple shifts and things of that nature, just based on probability of something happening.
Churches.
Yeah. I mean, I, I can only tell you what I've viewed from other places is you get into that and then you, people start asking for exemptions. Well, we're a church, we want an exemption. We're just saying that we want an exemption. Homestead exemption. So, who makes those determinations? How do we do it? I think there's definitely a formula that we, that we can start from, knowing that we're going to have to find to it. So, I, I think that's the key there is let's get something down, get it going, notify these businesses. If you're going to do it, let's do it with the understanding that this is something that we're going to have to find to along the way for that first twelve days. And I think we can. And then ultimately, once we know what kind of revenue that's going to draw, you can start to back, either back that out on your residential side or whatever you choose.
Do you have a clue as to how the Frederick County, Virginia or Maryland does it and some jurisdictions like that?
Um, I do not, but that would be something that would be easy for us to work out. Just work out. I know the young lady that, I'm not saying that Jefferson County is the right way to go, but the young lady that did the number of those kind of things, have a meeting in front of thirteen July and say, okay, tell me how you started, what you guys looked at, what was your framework to start looking at?
Don't want you to reinvent the wheel.
No, exactly. And, and begin to look at those things. But I, I, I think we can put something together that allows us to move forward with the understanding that it's not a good product.
Yeah, but I could see maybe three to five different formulas at least.
Yeah.
That you're going to have to go by.
We, we will, we will.
And it's like everything else that we've done, and I hate even bringing it up, but the store order management fee. When the council finally decided to implement that fee, it was with the understanding that if the permit was ever modified, which we're in the process of doing now, that at that time you may consider doing instead of a flat fee, you may do it based on an impervious area.
There's going to be some credits and all that stuff.
Correct. So, I see this process is, you know, whatever is brought to you by the, by the ambulance authority late this year may not be the same process that's used five years from now. It may require some, some fine tuning and tweaking.
Because you never know, somebody, somebody will have that one idea that changes the whole landscape of things.
And we've got pretty good at that over the years.
Well, that's why, and that's exactly why I said I thought we should have a public meeting so that you get that input because somebody might have some thought process that we don't.
I agree.
Yeah, and some of those special events that you're talking about, concerts or whatnot, you know, to me, I think that you should be able to charge through this ordinance an event fee. It's, it's a one flat fee if you want to, if you want to have five concerts, then you pay five separate fees that, that year. If you only want to have one, then you, you just do one. But then as far as like the hotel motel, I would classify it the same as you would any other commercial location. You know, if you have a occupancy rate of two hundred in your hotel, then that equates in the same commercial rate of one to two hundred people. It's the same.
Hotels you can do that on because they do have, all those have occupancy.
Yes. Yeah, they all, you know, whether they're full, which ours are always full, especially on eighty one corridor. But, um, you know, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily seeing three to five, but, but two to three, perhaps different ways of looking at it. And, and I agree, you know, we, we don't want to hurt the, the mom and pops, you know, so, so that perhaps that employer, the, the small business owner that has, you know, maybe from, from one to twenty employees, he pays the residential rate of whatever that rate is. And then it just starts graduating as, as we go higher in a, in an effort to be fair to the commercial business as well, but knowing the whole time that the residential folks in this county since nineteen eighty eight has carried the entire burden of the ambulance fee ordinance.
Mr. Wine, I got a question for you.
So, I, and Eddie, I think I, I agree with what you're saying, but I think that some of these larger businesses actually have staff on hand that, that can help their employees if there's an emergency. And, and I think that there's got to be some type of credit for those type of businesses that have that, that have training for employees to help in emergency situation too.
How hard would it be to, for you, your department, to collect information on call volumes to commercial places? Not just the big ones, but just give us some kind of an idea of how, like, you know how much the, some of the big ones are using the service, but we're talking about the small, the smaller business. I'm not going to call mom and pops, I'm going to say all smaller businesses.
So, the only way for us to get to that instantly is if the property classification is whatever.
You'd have to correspond the address that's being sent to, to the assessors.
That's exactly.
Information.
So, as long as it has a variable winner that we can say, okay, this is a commercial class property, then I can correlate that back to the address and give you the call.
And plus, plus if it's with the assessors, you can decide how big the space it is, what kind of use it's being used for.
You can, so we have the space size and the data also. So, we can answer all those questions as long as that, that information is accurate on the parcel side, because that's the only way. Or we, we could take that list, provide it to people who know the commercial property and can you validate that for this one, this one. But once we get to the physical address, we can do the counting instantly, quickly.
Because I think that's our first step. So, we have some basis to figure out the fee structure and stuff.
Right, yeah. And Brian's team, whoever the team is that's working that can reach right out to us and we can provide those answers instantly. Or what account do you ensure?
It would be nice if we could get access to the state workers' comp records. Because unless it's a, unless it's a family owned business, everybody that has a, a business license has to pay workers' comp. That would give us probably the, the.
You mean account of employees?
Yeah. I mean, that's actually what's being reported to the state. So, that would give us probably the most accurate accounting of employment level.
Yeah, Joy and I were just having that conversation about twenty minutes ago back there. That would probably be.
I'm sure that was your idea.
It was.
Great mind, yeah, yeah.
It was.
But you don't have to get your workers' comp through the state of West Virginia anymore. It can be private.
Yeah.
You know, and one, the one person that does have employee numbers would be the chamber, if they're a chamber member. That's based on the employee account. But as we.
Well, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to think about. I mean, if you're looking at, if you're looking at businesses, how are you going, how are you going to look at my construction company or yours? You know what I mean? How are you going to look at that as to, you know, travel? Or, or for example, years ago, my, my business was located in my house. So, and just because I have a business, I'm already paying a house fee. You know, you're going to pay a business fee too. You know what I mean? So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, that's for sure.
You're not going to solve it here today. That's why we said it's going to have to probably.
I don't know if you're going to get done in six months.
No, I say, I say twelve months. I'd say it's going to be twelve months.
Yeah, that's a lot, there's a lot to.
And maybe it's with the understanding that in late November, early December, at least I have Brian and whoever he wants to come back and give the council an update.
I'd say every two months for an update, right now.
Make sure he's moving forward.
I think it's going to be critical what other jurisdictions. I think that's really.
You don't really want to be like Maryland doing.
I didn't say Maryland.
Yeah, you didn't say, I heard you. I heard you say Maryland.
It could be Ohio.
Well, I, I think that once we have an opportunity to speak to different business owners as well, you know, whether they're small or larger or in between, you know, explain to them what we want to do and get their input as well. You know, what do they think would be fair? And.
So, does it, so does it make sense to have that meeting that we're talking about at the beginning of his process or wait till he gets his process figured out and then have a meeting and find out, oh, you, now you got to start over?
No, I think, I think what we do is give them a couple, give them four months to kind of get, get familiar with, some kind of a sense of direction, which way they want to go. Then I think we have a public workshop meeting. Not a public hearing, but a workshop. And then get the input and see.
Break down notes.
And then, and then go that way.
You won't wait that long for the public workshop?
I would think you, I mean, what do you think, Brian?
Let's get your opinions early in.
It's going to be a lot. I mean, I, I think you need to get some type of structure, some type of direction, maybe.
Like I said, I think even if you came to that workshop with a basic format of what you're looking to do and then you get the content from there, you can do that. As I said, we, we immediately left here, reached out to the fire board for information. Donna provided a spreadsheet of information. We immediately identified that, okay, we need to factor these things out at some point. The biggest holdup for us is how do we create structure? Which really what it's been is, you know, the data's coming from, from accurate sources. It's just, okay, how do we piece this thing together and how do we start moving forward? So, yeah, I, I think coming in with a basic plan's great, then you put your workshop together here with these people have to say. I don't think it's bad to be talking to them one on one between now and then to, because that could help make you turn some things a different, different lever or pull a different switch or something before we get there. But whatever you want us to do, we're going to do.
What would you think about having an update on the first Thursday in September is actually September first? Have Brian and whoever come back on September first kind of with an update. The first Thursday in November is November third. Maybe at that point have.
Have the workshop?
Have workshop or public hearing.
After the first two months.
Well, after the, you know, Brian come in, give you an update, maybe give some of your input and then have your, have your workshop or a public hearing or whatever you want to call it on Thursday, November third.
September, you went from September the first to November third. Why don't we have the workshop in October?
I was just giving them two months.
I know. That'd be two months, two months for them to get a grasp and from Mr. Wine, to try to, his department to try to give us.
So, instead of doing it the first Thursday, why don't we, why, why don't we do it on, go a little bit later into the month? How about if we do it on Thursday, October twentieth? That way it gives Brian, it would give Brian about six weeks, whatever input the council gave to maybe tweak it, or do you want to do it earlier in the month?
Well, I think some of them are saying earlier.
Well, we can do it the, how about the thirteenth? Or even sixth.
I'm looking at Eddie and Dan on that one.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we get, why don't we get Brian to come back to us in a couple of weeks and just tell us what he's found and, and see if we can get a feel and maybe he's got a better feel by then to where we should do, you know, how we should structure a, a workshop and that type of thing.
Brian can come back in early August.
Yes.
How about the fourth for an update?
That way it gives us some time to think about it and gives him some time to start the process and get a feel for what's going on.
First meeting August.
That would be Thursday, August fourth. Thank you, everyone. I know Eddie's out the week after next, but no one else is in the county. I know Doug, you're going to have some, you got some things coming up in August. I didn't know if you'd be here over the weekend.
I will be done. I'll, I'm on vacation the week of the fourteenth, so I'm good.
I might be, I might be out the, my, next week, like the week after, maybe.
Then that means that you and Eddie both will be out. So just make sure I need the.
Maybe. All right, so first meeting in August, he'll come back to us with your grasp.
Eddie, that'll be Thursday, the fourth. And let's do it the last thing on the agenda that day. That way the council won't be rushed, they'll have enough time to.
Yeah, we don't like to be rushed.
Gary, will that give you, your department a little bit of time to try to get some type of structure maybe?
At least get some preliminary numbers.
Right.
Because there'll be a lot of digestion once we fill them up yet.
Yeah, just something to give us some.
I will be here with a question back there.
Okay, all right. All right, um, so the fee structure itself, um, what are you, what are you all thinking?
I, I think that we've all recognized that the call volumes alone have constituted additional units to be placed on the street. And I've looked at all of the proposals that have been sent by the ambulance authority. And personally, I'm, I'm okay with a hundred and ten dollars. I'd like to see it done in two separate steps. This year, the, the billing would go from sixty to eighty-five. Next year, it would go to the hundred and ten, with the understanding of the commercial, um, fees to be implemented later. But the reason for the two-year is to be able to get these units on the street faster. I, I know for a fact that these ambulances are, they're busy and they're on the street an awful lot. So I, I really didn't want to see us wait four years for them to be able to get the funds that they need to be able to get the, the ambulances on the street. Uh, the one year right out of the gate, I thought was a little painful. You know, it's a very difficult time for a lot of people and we, we all understand that. So if we could take two bites out of it, uh, to go from sixty to eighty-five in a second year to one-ten.
I don't, I don't have any issues with that, Eddie. The only thing that I, that I, the timing, sixty to eighty-five dollars this year, um, but, and then the next billing cycle be a hundred and ten. I don't have any problem with that. The only thing is that I don't know, it's going to take at least twelve months, I feel, maybe wrong, to get that commercial worked out. How, how do you deal with that? Because we, we want, I think from what I'm hearing is you want to have the billing to equate to the same dollar value as a hundred and ten dollars for the residential, less the credit from the commercial side. So how, how do you do that all in the same year?
Say that again.
We, we can't, you know, uh, uh, we can't do that, you know. The, the commercial billing cycle won't go out until next year.
Right.
For the next billing cycle of twenty-twenty-three. And we see what those dollars actually generate, even though we might be able to be very close. So then you go back twenty-twenty-four, amend the ordinance again and push that residential fee down as much as you can. You may only be able to push it down ten dollars, or maybe you can do twenty or twenty-five. I don't know where those numbers are going to be.
I think it depends on where you're going to set the commercial fee.
Yes.
And what your objective is of the commercial fee is your objective to, uh, you know, infuse another twenty-five percent, another ten percent? What, what is the, what is the objective of trying to gather from the commercial side?
I can tell you my objective, uh, uh, Dan, is to be able to push the residential rate back down.
Right, but I, back down to what?
What, whatever those dollars allow.
Right.
So.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what you got to know. You got to know that in the beginning in order to set the fee. Because if you, if you figure out the mass of your calculation of what you're going to, what you're going to charge a fee for and that size, and then you have to figure out immediately how much money, how much revenue you're going to try to gain from that. And then how you're going to disperse that among, amongst those businesses. So, I mean, that's one of the first things in my opinion you have to do, right?
Well, I think. On the flip side of it, though, there was a lot of discussion last week about putting a substation in Western Berkeley. I think Brian, Brian correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that's probably a two-year process.
That's, that's in our two-year plan and we have some other two.
So. By, by the time you get in the position where you may have to tweak the fees a little bit, they may have a better cost of what the additional, better idea of what the additional cost is going to be.
Well, you look at additional costs.
This, this two-year time period, particularly with the home or, you know, the commercial fees may come as an opportune time to provide the additional funding that's going to be needed for Western Berkeley County. Correct?
Yes, sir. I think there's a lot of things you have to consider. Um, as I said, this, this is something we immediately got on. We looked at numbers and just sound and dirty. What's more important to me is I don't want to sit here and sell you that this is going to generate a half a million dollars when the data tells me that only fifty-three percent of the businesses pay the fee. That, that's the big thing. And that's, speaking with the fire board is based on their accounting. I think the last word that I had, this has been a couple of months ago, was that they had eighteen hundred bills went out, but they had eight, eight hundred and fifty delinquents at ten and a half months into the year. So that's a significant number. So we, what we don't want to do is set a rate dependent upon, let's say, half a million dollars, knowing that we're only going to collect a quarter of a million. So I, I think that's all the things that we need to get into during this development time, figure out what we can figure out. And as Eddie said, do it for a year, see what the return is and then make the decision then. And the other thing is, is we don't know what this call volume is going to be two years from now. You know, that, bringing that fee on board and maybe not touching the household fees, what, you know, like we've done a lot of things this eleven years to keep us from having to raise this. We'll, we'll have to wait and see when we get to that point in time. We can speculate a lot, do a lot of things to, you know, change things and prevent them, but we really need to put things in place, see where they go and some of those things.
No, and I can, I can see where there's going to be a, a big, a, a big argument from businesses that say, hey, you know, I got, I got twenty employees and they all live right here in Burke County and they're paying this fee at their house. And now you're charging me the same thing for my business for the employees that are already paying the fee.
But then you turn back around and take a business, a utility company. I know about majority of their employees are out of state.
I get it.
You know, so I, 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 I just want to get this timing right. So, um, are you saying, Eddie, that, and I, I agree with everybody's conversation here. One of my things is, I'm going to back up for a second, is, uh, we know what some of this call volume is on a couple of these businesses. I just like, one of the ways that, that I calculate on how much it should be structured, and it's, it's just the tip of the iceberg, is how much does it take your total budget divided by, you know, the number of counts you have, um, number of calls you have. And now you got the average cost per call and multiply that in some of these to kind of give you an idea of what it costs, right?
And that should give you the percentage that you're going to put on the business side.
Right.
Right, I get it.
So, so then you turn back around, um, I just want to make sure I hear you right, Eddie. Is you're saying a two-year phase, which means when we say a two-year implementation, two different times, that the first one from sixty to eighty-five will be in this billing cycle that's getting ready to go out? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The second billing cycle would be next year, physical year billing cycle, right? And then you're also saying that that second year billing cycle, this time next year, could be a hundred and ten and it may be the following year before you actually roll that back. You're talking about rolling it back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we see where we're at on the commercial side. So we see the, the revenue that's generated and then take those dollars and go back and push down the residential rate a little bit if we can.
But I, so I'm clear on this. The, the, the commercial side, knowing that it's going to take twelve months, probably minimum to do, would never be ready for next year billing cycle. Because you're, there's no, more than likely wouldn't be. It, it'd be great if it was, but more than likely it wouldn't be.
But I think even if it is, you'd have to let it go through a whole billing cycle before you solve based on the occupancy rate.
It'd take another year.
And, and by physically year twenty-twenty-four, which would be effective July first of twenty-three, July first of twenty-four, um, that'd be this for twenty-twenty-five. Who, I mean, we were just looking at residency this morning. What, how many, how many residents did we put on the first six months of the year?
Eight hundred and sixty.
So council person, I mentioned, I don't care where you look, we'll look around. Something that's important, and I don't have to tell the five of you this, that we're a growth county. I don't care what state you're in, whole different scenario when you're growthy or not. We did fourteen hundred and change, new houses last, new addresses last year. In June this year, eight hundred and sixty. We're paced to be three hundred new that's ahead of. And when you look at those numbers, while it's good for revenue, it really hurts public safety. Uh, because they're not structured in this state, in our fees, in our, the way we collect taxes are not structured to support growth. It's very different. You know, it's very difficult to run this organization in a growth scenario based on.
The way it's structured. All right, all right, so, um, all right, I just want to make sure I was clear on that, understand that.
Yes, sir.
And I'm okay with Eddie's thought as well.
And, and to Gary's concern or, or, or thought process there also, um, even though the billing cycle is a year behind, even on the new folks coming in, you know, we do have continual new growth coming that will pay the fee as well.
Well, and, and I want to, I want to say that the, the structure, and we've talked about this, the fee structure is designed a little bit nationally for growth, you know? So, because people, but, but it, we, there's never, as we talked about on your presentation, there's never really any allocation for inflation or competitive wage. You know, there's a, you're on the public safety side. It's so easy to hop in your vehicle and go to Northern Virginia because they'll go down there and work two twenty-four, or twenty-four hour shifts and come back and have five days. They're not beating that road five times or ten times a week. All right, so that's your competition, direct competition. Um, more so than it is for being a police officer. Same with fire. But, all right.
So it sounded like Eddie was willing to make a motion for eighty-five, one-ten.
Well, it'd be a one-ten.
I'm, I'm willing to make the motion, I will make the motion that we approve the fee of a hundred and ten dollars. The first year being raised from sixty to eighty-five. The second year goes from eighty-five to a hundred and ten.
All right, I'm motioning forward. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Now, this, the eighty-five is effective now?
This year.
It'll go out on this billing cycle.
You get ready to send your bill.
I'm ready to accept.
All right.
So that's in a ordinance, so we'll have to get, uh, if that changed any ordinance, he's going to do something.
All right.
I've got it.
All right.
And over there, I just got to change it up.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
All right.
Mr. President, if, if the council sees fit, I need executive session for, um, hospital litigation and county council personnel matters.
Okay, all right. Um, any items from the public? Yes, sir, Mr. Knowles. State your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Brad Knowles from Tom Hock, West Virginia. First of all, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, you just moved the, the fee from sixty to eighty-five this billing cycle, is that correct?
That's correct.
I think the people can stomach that, all right? And as I, I was surprised to hear an overwhelming voice forth, okay? But you know, I'm opposed.
Right.
And I'm still opposed, but I, I can handle a stomach, I can stomach eighty-five this year. And, and my, my biggest concern has always been that I own two pieces of property. All right, so you get a double whammy. And some of you probably own more than one as well, you get a double whammy. Uh, but, um, it's, it's a done deal, so. Uh, I've got several issues, if you don't mind listening, I'll try not to be too long. I'd like to know what, uh, the, what the, uh, top ten things that you're sending the lobbyists to Charleston? What, what she's going to be working on this next legislative session?
That'll be done before the, by the end of September, we'll have that list.
Okay, I'd, I'd appreciate just seeing it. All right, thank you. And also for.
That's an open meeting as well.
Okay. Um, also for paying and filing your taxes, I, I'd like to see, this is just a suggestion that the, the county maybe for the months of September and October, have some different times, like being open to like eight or nine. I, I know that's, that's an extra expense, but it gives those people work and shift work an opportunity to pay their taxes.
That's regulated by the sheriff.
Oh, okay.
And it's his department.
Pass that on to the sheriff.
Yes.
It's just an idea, and I, I, you know, just, just a thought. I remember I used to have to work shift work and I'd be working twelve hours straight and some weeks you couldn't get off, you had seven days in a row, twelve hours.
We did lessen the hours. It used to be nine to five. We shortened them to eight to five and every county agency now is open to eight to five.
Okay. All right, so that's a piece of puzzle I didn't know.
Yeah.
Uh, one other thing, I'm severely hearing impaired, okay? And, and it's very difficult for me, I even said upfront, but here's some of the things that's being said. So it'd be nice if everybody that come to the podium would speak up a little bit and stick your mouth right up against it. The same way with you, if you could just speak up a little bit louder, that would be nice.
All right.
Yeah, I'll just leave that out. Also last week, you know, when I got up and spoke, I reiterated, why can't we use D transfer tax money or ARPA money for this fund? And you basically said that it was hard to budget that way.
Well, I made the statement that we don't take any special revenue funds that use for, um, personnel because it's not sustainable. And sir, I'll give you an fine example. Jefferson, and not to talk anything about our neighbors, but Jefferson County used, used for years to track money, uh, to pay wages. And the unfortunate thing about them, when the track business went down because of the COVID and then it opened up tracks in other places, their gambling casinos, their revenue went down and all of a sudden they didn't, they were in financial difficulties. So whatever we use for wages, we want it to be more sustainable than, than a one-time infusion in our budget.
It's easier, I think, to use that one-time infusion for bricks and mortar for maintenance and facilities and things like that than it is in, than it is in employee, um, salaries.
That's why we don't do that.
Okay. And I just wanted to reiterate that once again.
Because next year, the money may not be here and then the employee is out.
It's sort of like a grant. We, we have a lot of employees that's on grants and they're not guaranteed a job that that grant draws, drives up. The good thing is we have three grant administrators that do a wonderful job and keep pulling money in. So that's, that's huge for, for this county to have those three people.
Uh, that's, that's all I have at this time. Uh, that's, that's all I have at this time. I like the idea that, that you were thinking on a commercial aspect too in regards to the Anne Blans fee.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and maybe we can roll it back a little bit to the people.
Yes, sir.
And basically where I live at, most of the time I'm hearing the comments that I'm making now, you know, I'm against a fee increase. Well, to this day, you know, that's the stormwater management fee makes me, my head's going to blow off. That's some, that's how mad I get about that one. So.
That's, that's, that's at no fault of the county. That's, that's something that was mandated.
I, I remember that you and Mr. Deidre Dollier came back to the Tomahawk Realtor Club, discussed about it one day. So I'm pretty familiar with.
I can tell you, it makes my hat blow off too. I have the same issues with it.
Well, and the good thing is.
Yeah. I, I basically don't have public water, public sewer. Why am I paying this fee? I have very little runoff on anything that I, I'm sure of that.
Yeah. And, and the good, the, I mean, the federal Supreme Court just rolled back a regulation that was given from the, the feds to a state. And actually, it was the state of West Virginia that said that the federal government didn't have jurisdiction. So hopefully they'll just make out the, you know, they'll, they'll look over and make sure and check on all those. I think all the, all of us feel the same way. And to a certain extent, but, you know, we're trying to do our job the fairest way possible.
I had a piece of property that had zero runoff ever. No water ever left my property, ever, other than soaking in.
What, what's the repercussions for those that don't pay the fee?
They get, they, they get, you, you're asking us questions that we can't answer because that's its own utility.
Okay.
You know, that would be the stormwater.
I would, I would guess the same repercussions that if you didn't pay a water fee or a sewer fee, that they could come after you in court, same thing they did.
Just as any fee, the fire board has two people down there that goes after people that don't pay the fee all the time. And they're doing a wonderful job of collecting that. The Anne Blans authority is at 102% of their fee structure.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Need a motion to go to executive session for potential litigation. And what else?
County council person.
All right.
Second.
We are in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're all in executive session.
I'm gonna take some action, I'm gonna go get me some meat.
Alright, we're out of executive session, we're back in regular session, is there any action being taken? No, Mr. Barnhart?
Well, I'm gonna take some action, I'm gonna move to do something.
We are recessed.
I'm just glad some...